Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting, the Putnam Valley Board of Education meeting of Thursday, April 12th. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, to start, I'd like to resolve to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meetings of March 12th, March 22nd, and April 6th, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we're going to do budget first?
Yes.
We have a change from the listed presentation. The county executive, Ms. Marion Odell, will be joining us, but she's running late, so we will start with Ms. Jill Figarella at our budgets presentation.
Good evening. Sorry, fix this. Before we start the budget presentation, I'm going to go over the proposition number two that's going to be on the ballot. This is the bus proposition information. So, the bus proposition for 2018-19. In that proposition, we hope to accomplish the sustaining of our equipment, transportation. We have a transportation contractor with the district, and we also have our Putnam Valley School District buses that we own. So, the transportation contractor provides 20 large buses and six vans. They do some of our, all of our regular home-to-school bus routes, some after-school activities, and also day trips and athletics. The Putnam Valley School District buses are three large buses right now, 12 vans, two SUVs, and they provide our transportation for our after-school activities, for athletics, and also for out-of-district student special placements. So, the bus proposition is what I would consider a long-range plan, and why do we need one? This allows us, for time, to implement, you know, the cost of these items and avoids unnecessary challenges when we're doing our budgeting. It also provides clarity on impacting and spending. For example, when we get state mandates from year to year and have to put them into the budget, it provides a means that we can still provide the same programs and not affect, you know, the children because we have a large expenditure that year, such as purchasing a vehicle. And it helps us to maintain safety also, as well as the expenses. The number-one reason why we have to maintain our vehicles is for safety. We have to transport our children every day. There's about, the Putnam Valley buses do about 313,000 miles a year on their buses that we own in the district. So, renewing our bus replacement plan helps keep the expenses steady and reasonable within the annual budgets. We also have to think about staying within the tax cap from year to year, so if we do have that one-time expenditure that, for a purchase of a vehicle, it can truly drive up the budget and have us possibly cut something else that we do not want to in the way of budget, in the way of program for students. How do we do this? We use a five-year amortization schedule, which allows principal and interest to be spread over time, and again, it makes for budgeting easier. We calculate usually the value of the fleet. We estimate, you know, what the value is of our aging buses, and we look at the mileage and repair history. We create a bus replacement plan, as I mentioned. For instance, if you had a home equity loan and you needed to borrow on it, this gives us the, you know, the ability to borrow when we need to. Sorry? And it's only there for when you want to access it. In other words, we wouldn't be borrowing the $500,000 that's going to be in the proposition. We would simply have it there as a means to borrow it if we need to replace or repair any of the buses. So, on the ballot, this will be proposition number two. And again, the payback is over five years to smooth out the expenses, and we would be budgeting at any time we borrowed for one-fifth of the cost to pay off over those five years. Does anybody have any questions about the proposition number two?
Just as we've mentioned on the other presentations, this really is not connected to the later start for next year.
Correct. This is in no way related to the later start time. This is a separate issue entirely.
Those four buses would come from our contractor as, in the past, the ones we have, our buses, are used primarily for the special education, transportation, and athletics, field trips, and some of the smaller runs, but just not to be confused with that project.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. You know what happened here with this? Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to be presenting the 2018-19 proposed budget for the Putnam Valley School District, and there will be a resolution later on tonight in hopes of adopting the budget. So, at first, I'd like to go through some of the things that we do in preparation for the budget, and the first one is taking a look at the enrollment. So, the enrollment, we take into consideration if there's new housing, you know, what were the late enrollments last year? Take a look at whether enrollments after the budget was adopted last year, and, you know, how many children moved in and out of the district, trying to maintain class sizes. And this particular chart does not include students that we send out of the district. So, the new piece on this chart compared to the last time I presented this is that the kindergarten is above what we had originally anticipated. So, we will indeed be maintaining those class sections that we have in place right now. There were 92 enrollments as of yesterday, and of course, I just put an estimate. I expect it, you know, to increase between now and the end of August, but I don't know how much, and I don't know how many will move out. So, it's still an unknown for all of us. So, the total enrollment for 1617 was 1,700. The current year is 1621. Expect this year to be somewhere between 1,580 and 1,650. The next step in the budget is usually figuring out what our tax cap calculation is. We've never gone through the process before on a presentation. I thought this year I would step you through it since that's usually the next thing I do before we start preparing the budget. You start with the prior year's tax levy, which would be this year, the current year. And then, what gets factored in is the tax-based growth factor for us that is 1.0. This is determined by the Department of Taxation. It's a regional factor. If you want to learn more about that, there is a website here that you could go to. And this presentation is all on our website if anybody needs to access it or would like to look at it at another time. It is on our home website under Budget. From the tax levy, we take away what's called the prior year's capital exclusion, which would be, sorry, $2,163,825, and that is our capital debt. Then, we add our building aid that's received, which is $1,239,074 on that capital debt, and we come up with a result of what our tax levy is less our exclusions, $924,751, and the result is $34,851,070. So, this is known as our prior year tax levy less the prior year's exclusions. The result is then multiplied by the smaller of 2% or the inflationary change in the Consumer Price Index is applied. So, the Consumer Price Index this year that was applied was the 2%, and this is also known as our tax levy limit before exclusions, $35,548,091. Then, we get to apply our 2018-19 exclusions to that calculation, and we take the debt that's coming in the coming year, the 1819 debt, of $2.6 million. We reduce that by the state building aid that's expected in 1819 of $1.3 million. If there is a retirement system contribution that the district has to make that's in excess of 2%, we are also entitled to add that back to the levy. However, next year, it is going to be 0.83%. Still a large number, $243,000, which we cannot add back because it is under the 2%. The Putnam Valley allowable exclusions then are $1.2 million, and our allowable tax levy limit is at $2.799, or $36,777,311. The levy that's being proposed in the budget is below the allowable limit by $30,000 at $36,747,311. The Putnam Valley tax levy has been under the allowable cap since its inception, and since the levy remains under the cap, homeowners will see a tax relief credit in the fall from the New York State Department of Taxation. It doesn't come from the school district, and there are restrictions, and I think I have them listed here. So, depending on the income level, if your property is star-eligible, you would receive a certain level of tax relief credit. I have some estimates up there based on the current year. I don't have the information, the tax information, for next year, so these are estimates. So, depending on your level of income, which is listed here, and again, this website is listed on this presentation. It's also in our budget newsletter. I advise people to go there and take a look at that. Enhanced star recipients who also live in the district would be entitled to this tax relief credit also, but it's calculated differently. It's not based on income. It's 12% of whatever the enhanced star savings is. So, some fiscal highlights, just run through a few of them quickly. Since 2012, the district has stayed below the tax cap. The star-eligible homeowners have received the tax relief credit since the program started. Our proposed tax rate will remain lower than it was four years ago. The district continues to budget thoughtfully and spend the budget in a fiscally responsible manner. And the district also recognized that residents, you know, are calling for lower taxes. The district continues to use available resources wisely and share services whenever possible. And property values, you know, they, if our programs that are offered at the school district are quality, it's important for people to realize that property values tend to increase or should increase when they're offered and fiscal responsibility is present in your school district. So, aggregately, the allowable tax levy limit since its inception has been reduced by $3.5 million. I want to, oh, sorry. Talk about that a little bit. Again, the district has levy, has a tax levy that's averaged 0.97 increase over seven years. That's under 1% over the last seven years. So, the actual, this is a chart that shows the actual tax levy compared to the allowable tax levy. So, the orange color bar here you see is our actual levy each year, and the allowable levy being in yellow. You can see each year, there was a distinct difference between what was allowed to be taxed and what the district actually taxed. Again, $3.5 million under what could have been taxed. This is some tax cap data that was filed as of March 1st for 628 school districts across the state. So, I gave our tax cap, our tax cap data, or, I'm sorry, the percentage allowable that we used on the tax levy from year to year over the last seven years here at the bottom. So, the maximum allowable increase for those years is along this line, and the actual proposed levy increases, this is averaged of all the districts. So, you can see our numbers on this lower level here were either right in the middle or well below. And again, under 1% increase over the last seven years. This is a chart of our tax rate comparison over those years, showing that this coming year, in 1819, our estimated rate, if assessed values, we're not sure where those are going to end up, but our estimated tax rate is based on the 2017 assessed home values, estimating it to be $27.36 per thousand dollars of assessment. Again, lower than it was four years ago. The rate is about 72 cents higher than it was this year on an average household valued at $330,000, talking about an increase of less than $250, and again, eligible for the tax relief credit that I spoke about a little earlier. So, we have something different in our budget this year that you're going to see. It's a reclassification of our annual debt payments. We'll be taking money from the debt service budget, and it will be coming from the general fund budget. So, our debt payments will now be getting paid from the general fund budget. The amount of debt payments are no longer going to be paid out of the debt service fund. This causes no impact to the tax levy. It's only a reclassification, and the debt service fund budget looks deflated this year, minus $1.3 million. And the debt payments, again, like I mentioned, will be paid out of the general fund. There'll be no impact to the tax levy. It's just a reclassification, and the general fund budget looks inflated the first year. So, basically, it's like you're taking the money out of one checking account instead of the other checking account. So, you're just moving money from one fund to the other in order to pay the debt. But when it gets, when we look at the budget, it looks like there is a change in the budget by that amount of money because you're only looking at the general fund budget. So, we'll have that inter-fund transfer debt reclassification of $1.3 million. We have state aid coming in, very low, a lot lower than we have in the past. I know a lot of districts are struggling with the foundation aid coming in, a lot lower than they had hoped. The state has still not restored it to the level that is really equitable for school districts. It's never gone to its original formula. So, we're only getting $87,000 in aid next year in addition to what we've been getting. Our interest earnings will be increasing about $60,000. And the screen is frozen. I'm sorry.
So, just while you're, while you're looking, that, I think it's important to understand that that $87,000 is an increase. That's a very small increase. We do get millions in state aid, about, what, 13?
No, 10.5.
10.5 million. But it's the increase that's significant because that's the revenue that you are applying to your budget and helps you with the increases that are naturally occurring. In a budget, you have naturally occurring fixed interest changes. So, you have your salaries, for example, contractual salaries. You have inflationary pressure on your budget. So, as we work through our budget, those increases are the significant piece because they are, that's your revenue. That's what you are looking toward.
Right, so the, what happens is it affects the local share that needs to be contributed. So, we have that state aid. We have the interest earnings. This year, we aren't expecting any out-of-district tuition, so you'll see that line decreasing by $250,000. Our taxes are remaining under the allowable cap, $971,000. We have a use of our reserves that are necessary to stay under the tax cap. You'll see an additional $275,000 coming from the tax beneficiary reserve, employee benefit and liability reserve, $100,000, employee retirement system reserve, $200,000, and appropriated fund balance. We're seeing less use of that, $44,000. So, the $87,000, last time I reported on this, was 57. The April 1st state budget passed, and our district received an additional $30,000. So, that's where, why we're at 87. We were actually at 57. So, the other side of that equation is less reliance on our appropriated fund balance. That number was $14,000 last time we saw this slide. Now, it's 44. But, so it's gone down, and our reliance on that being less is very important. So, our grand total budget-to-budget changes in revenue are $2.7 million. This is an overview of all of the revenues we expect to receive in the budget, our state and federal sources of $10.5 that we just spoke about, our local and non-tax revenues at $510,000. Those are down because of the lower tuitions. The real property tax revenue, again, $971,000 at $36,747,311, sorry. Appropriated fund balance, down the $44,000, so less reliance on our appropriated fund balance of $688, and our appropriated reserves that I just talked about, $1.5 million. Here is the one-time reclassification of the debt. I put a subtotal here to specifically show that this is a reclassification, and our budget being at $51.2 million.
Jill, on the reclassification, again, that accounting item, it was also, there was, came out of a recommendation from the audit that we had.
That is correct, yeah.
That's a recommendation of where we should be, how we should be spending.
Where we should be paying it out of. We should be paying it out of the general fund to make sure that we represent the full amount of the debt service coming through our general fund. So, some of the expenditure impacts that we're going to see in the budget are, again, the other, the 1.3 million, so that's the other side of that equation. We see it coming in in revenue, and we see it going out in expenditure. So, no impact to the tax levy. Teacher retirement system rate has increased on the salaries, 0.83% or $243,000. We're seeing an increase in health premiums. Again, that's a negotiated employee contribution. They do, the employees do help out with a percentage in their bargaining contracts, but this increase is still, we're still realizing $346,000 change. Other salaries and contracted services, materials and supplies account for about $525,000. We have BOSI services increasing by 3%. But we do have a couple of retirements, a teacher and a non-teaching staff person that are not being replaced, so they, you know, impact the budget the opposite way. We have some programmatic changes. The additional buses through the contractor, that's four large buses and one van at about $205,000. And we'll have a savings by replacing one of our grade levels with Chromebooks rather than laptops. The savings is about $100,000. Our grand total budget-to-budget changes in expense, $2.7 million. This is an overall picture of our expenditures. We have our general support area of the budget, $4.4 million. It's up 2.6%. Instruction, $29.4 million. Of course, the largest part of the budget. You would expect to see the largest increase, $525,000. Transportation, $2.8 million. Again, increase, $197,000. That's due to the additional buses. Undistributed or employee benefits, which is our mandated social security, health insurance, retirement pension plans, welfare trust fund, $11.9 million, or a 5.5% increase. We have inter-fund transfers, $1.2 million. Again, that is our subtotal prior to the one-time reclassification of the $1.3 million, bringing our budget to $51.2 million. This is a representation of our three-part budget, which is our administration portion at 12.2%. Our instruction at, sorry, the instruction at 76.3% and the capital portion of the budget at 11.5%. Again, I'm going to just briefly talk about proposition number two, which was the previous presentation about the bus financing. This will be on the ballot. It's not related to the later start time. The bus proposition is asking voters to approve financing of up, up to $500,000 on district-owned buses. Again, no money is borrowed until replacement vehicle, until a replacement vehicle would be needed. The proposition allows us for borrowing only when necessary, and the actual dollars are spent only when the bus replacement becomes necessary for aging vehicles. We're able to do this because New York State has provided that vehicle for us to pay back over a five-year period. We still have to use the New York State bidding and procurement process to do that, and this method has least impact on the budget. Again, a large bus, new, about, costs about $90,000, and a van costs about $65,000. So, that could have a big impact on our budget if we had to spend that single amount in a single year. So, that's why the proposition is there. I am going to talk briefly about a contingency budget if we had to go to that for any reason, just to share that information with you. The board has three options at that point if a budget should fail. Option one would be to revote, put up the same budget. Option two, revote on a cut budget. Option three, adopt a contingency budget. If a budget happens to be defeated twice, the board would be forced to adopt the contingent budget, and a contingency budget for this district would be, that would mean that the tax levy could be no greater than the prior year's tax levy. This means $971,000 in cuts. You know, the administration, the administrative portion of the budget could not exceed what it was last year, and any non-contingent items must be removed. The impact on students for a $971,000 cut would be, you know, tremendous. You know, they compromise future programs and future budgets. Having to lower the tax levy to a levy that was the prior year, we just stepped through the calculation for the tax cap. What that means for the district is it compounds from year to year. Cuts would, cuts could be in many areas or a combination such as personnel, athletics, instructional programs, operations, and again, which would all impact the students. A lower levy would not allow for program growth or programmatic changes that are necessary for student success. The budget is below the allowable tax cap, and I think it's important to keep mentioning that and to let everyone know that the budget has been that way for the last few years, and it has been thoughtfully prepared for program years and it has been thoughtfully prepared for program and for the revenue side as well as the expenditure side of the budget. This is our budget calendar, April twelfth, which is today, is our special business meeting to adopt the budget. April sixteenth is the last day for trustee petitions due to the district and I believe there's two positions open. May first is our final public hearing on the budget, May tenth is the last day for community members to register to vote, and May fifteenth is the vote. We'll be voting on the school budget vote, is proposition number one, the bus proposition is bus prop, is proposition number two. The vote will also have the two trustee seats on the ballot and it will be held at the elementary school from six AM to nine PM. And I want people to sign up for our electronic newsletter on our website, www.pvcd.org. Our electronic newsletter is already online. After the budget is adopted, we will be posting the budgetary portion of the newsletter so everyone can view all of the financial information that's available. Does anybody have any questions?
No, no questions when we've, this is our third or fourth viewing of the budget, but you mentioned just casually before, Jill, that the thought, budget is a very thoughtful process and I want to probably thank you for, thoughtful isn't even the right word, there isn't a word.
Okay, thank you.
For how, every line, every penny, every decision, every reason for the decision is gone over, over and over again and, you know, I know taxes are a difficult subject, your money is in good hands in the hands of Jill Figueroa, she watches every penny, so just want to thank you for that on behalf of the board and for the taxpayers of this district.
Thank you.
Agreed. I remember last year, everybody remembers, we sent out budget newsletters nice and early, thinking we were going to get there plenty of time, there were actually deadlines we have to do and you sent them out plenty early and then somehow or other, they started appearing sometimes weeks after they were supposed to have appeared in the mail. So what are we going to do this year?
So from what I understand, there's been other districts and other municipalities in the same situation, even more recently, that have been in the news. We're trying another strategy. We will be still mailing out what is known as the budget notice. That has to be mailed to every household in the district. So that will be a two-page, it won't be the lengthy newsletter that we normally mail out. We feel that that isn't, you know, it's cost prohibitive when it disappears. So basically, the two-sided notice will go out in the, it's only allowed to be mailed out. I think the, the deadline or the date is May ninth, so we can't mail it out before that. And a lot of times, that was the problem with the newsletter, we couldn't release it until then if it all was included in the same cover. So what we've done is post an electronic newsletter online, it's called, it's a spring newsletter and like I said, tomorrow, we will have the budgetary or financial information added to that if the budget gets adopted tonight. And we will also place copies of that around town in different locations, so we'll be sharing that, it'll be available in all of our buildings. So we are having some printed and distributing them, but online is the best place to view the extensive portion, you know, version of the letter. But, and it can be, you know, they can sign up for it if they don't automatically get it, but going onto the website is, is the best way to, to see it.
We also sent letters called the post offices in the area and also nationally, at the federal level. We've spoken to a variety of postmasters and we also noted that a number of districts have found this to occur.
So what we've gotten our postmaster to agree to this year is the, the piece that does have to go out that we are mailing. The postmaster here in Putnam Valley is ensuring us that they are taking that, those trays of newsletters down to White Plains themselves and dropping it off because they want to make sure that they are not viewed as contributing to the problem, but contributing to the, the solution. So, you know, we have partnered with them to try and help us out with that.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much again, Jill.
We are honored this evening to have with us our county executive, Putnam County, Mary Ellen Odell, who's going to speak to us about the issues of addiction in Putnam County. Please come up. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Dr. Willis, thank you. That was a very impressive presentation, having sat through seven budgets myself on a county level, but there's so many similarities, the struggles and the challenges are very much, very much the same. You know, it's always been my hope since I was on the legislature that the school districts and the municipalities would work closer together to find deficiencies because we really are doing the same thing every day and we're doing it for the same taxpayer, right? So I'm hoping moving forward, we can continue to share ideas of efficiencies and, Dr. Willis, you've been terrific with, working with the county, certainly we are talking about the School Resource Office Program and ways to enhance school safety and making sure that we're doing the very best we can with advanced technology and certainly expanding the dialogue on what we do need to do here in Putnam County to make sure that we are school safe. And I do appreciate your support with the School Resource Officer Program. We also share a common ground when it comes to addiction, substance abuse. It spares no one, we all realize that. I am a parent, I knock on wood and say I don't bother to buy lottery tickets because I feel as though I've won the lottery because I, I'm, somehow, we've been lucky enough to escape that scourge of addiction and the tragedies that have ensued since, since my time as Putnam County Executive. It's been great that the awareness has been heightened and the open conversation has been embraced, which is terrific. People are not just sitting at home and worrying alone anymore, there's so many resources available. And in my role as county executive, I also serve as the president for the New York State Association of Counties this year, which has allowed me a seat at the table to really take a hold of some of the larger ideas and bring them back to Putnam County. Now, there's been so many conversations about addiction and substance abuse and the sources and the resources and the whys and the who and the where. And one thing that we landed on in New York State, and I tracked it for the last two years on the national level, was the parallel to the tobacco industry lawsuits, was an opportunity for municipalities, school districts to take on the Big Pharma. In our particular case, the names are familiar, they are Purdue Pharmaceuticals, Teva Pharmaceuticals, Johnson and Johnson, J&amp;J Endo Pharmaceuticals, so these are the larger pharmaceutical outfits. And what we're basically saying is that your practices, some of which can be deemed as fraudulent practices, excessive marketing, inappropriate marketing, has encouraged and promoted addiction and substance abuse. And so, looking and tracking at the results of the tobacco industry settlement and looking at the opportunity for us to do the same here in Putnam County, we retained a law firm. And I spoke with the law firm at length and talked about what the case would actually entail, what, what kind of teeth would it really have, what information and data would they need from us, how much of our own personnel time would be necessary. And we found, I thought, a very good compromise and a good place where we agreed that we could really, in fact, work together and make a statement in our litigation. And I know that society has taken litigation and we've become a very litigious society and, and some of it can be frivolous. This by no means whatsoever is, should be considered one of those frivolous litigation opportunities, much like the tobacco settlement. So we've engaged council, the legislature, full support. In your district, legislator Barbara Scuchamara and legislator Bill Goldman have supported this. They're working with us on a routine basis when the law firm needs to sit with us to collect the data. The data will come from the Health Department, from Social Services, from our law enforcement. It will come from, we're hopeful, the school districts and the other local municipalities because while there's a social impact and we recognize the tragedies and the lives and that have been ruined and the families that have been broken, we also recognize the fiscal piece, which is duly noted in your budget address tonight, that there is a, there is a fiscal impact to all of us because of the pharmaceuticals' practice in promoting what has resulted in substance-wide, substance and addiction in our county and in our nation, quite frankly. So I'm here tonight to explain this litigation, to ask you to help us with information and data. And, and right now, we're in an informal collecting of the data and there will be a point in time when we're going to have to remit in, in a format that will be applicable for the litigation. I can tell you that this lawsuit, this litigation, this settlement will probably be comprised of better practices and some monetary restitution. I have pledged and I, I included it when I proposed the resolution for litigation, unlike the tobacco settlement, I will not take the monies and put them into a capital fund for buildings or salaries or something outside of what's most important and that's right back into the programs, as you noted, I noted in your budget. That's where it's the most important, is back into the programs and education. So the timing on the litigation, for those of you who are wondering, in the nation, some of the national suits are going to be settled in a small court in Ohio. My counterpart as county executive in Albany in the last month was called to testify. The judge on the case has consolidated the area cases, the national areas cases, and he made a statement to both the plaintiff and the defendant and he said, "No one file a motion to dismiss. We will settle this case and we will do it before we lose more lives." So that's a very positive, very encouraging sign for us. Our timing in New York State, we're targeting both the manufacturers and the distributors in our lawsuit, I wanted to take a real proactive, parallel path on that. So the attorneys right now are taking as much time as they can to prepare their briefs with as much data as we have available currently and we're hopeful that will result in the same statement from the, from the judge who will say, "Do not file a motion to dismiss, let's just talk about a settlement." So I'll, take any questions from?
I mean, it's certainly such a public dilemma or tragedy and I'm glad some, there's some movement to put some accountability and maybe raise awareness on every level.
And we need the resources, quite frankly, to battle this, you know, I, as the county executive, early on in my administration, we started our one army on the war on addiction and we have a drug treatment court that this county funds, that New York State defunded. And we fund it because the recidivism rate for graduates through that program are in the teens, where without the program, they were in the high eighty percentile. So, you know, we all know, everyone deserves a second chance and everyone should have an opportunity for treatment. The drug treatment program that we offer in Putnam County is a standalone program, we're very, very proud of it. It was noted on NBC, actually. I don't know if anyone ever saw, it was a Dateline episode a couple of years ago, showing how important this drug treatment court is to families and to individuals and to people and the lives that have been saved. I can tell you personally, as a county executive, I have attended ninety percent of the drug treatment courts, even with my schedule being as hectic. And, and there is about four or five a year and I will tell you, I encourage all of you as you are leaders in a community and you're obviously volunteering with a big lift because you care about your community, to try to catch a drug treatment court graduation and see, it's not always youth, it's not always the young folks, it, it spans the, the whole age. And you hear them talk about how their lives have been changed, their families are reunited, they've found purpose, they've found self-esteem, and they found it all through the, this wonderful organization of drug treatment court coordinators in the county. And some of these individuals were facing up to twenty-seven years in state prison because of the crimes that they were, you know, arrested for. So they have to voluntarily engage in the drug treatment court and they have a lot of work to do in those two years. And not everyone makes graduation, in the last drug treatment court graduation about two weeks ago, two of the graduates were declined because they failed the drug test. So they go back into the treatment court and, and try to make amends. So, you know, this, all of this costs money. The families, they suffer too, if they have to go on services, the individual is on services. So it's important that we make these programs possible and it's also important that we make the pharmaceutical companies responsible as well, so that we can continue doing the, doing these kind of programs.
What kind of data do you see yourself collecting from the schools?
Well, you know, they talk about absenteeism.
Yes.
As being, you know, something that we see in government, you see in corporate world, you see it in Main Street economy, when people can't perform their duties, where there's a, a situation, an incident, an accident, that can be tied back to addiction, that has cost money, insurance companies, you know, premiums rising, there's a whole host of areas where, you know, if you just sit back, you could probably fill a whole, the whole alphabet with the different ways that, that addiction and substance, substance abuse is costing us fiscally. You know, we focus in our administration on the social impact and the fiscal impact of just about every issue, as you do, as school board members, trustees and superintendents do.
The, the thing that we notice is, it's very hidden. I mean, it may very well, for example, addiction may very well be behind some of the absences we see or some of the, but it's so hidden, you know, until it's, usually it's hidden until it's too late, unfortunately. And what we see sometimes in school districts is, we see students who are in their, at the universities, at the colleges, they're out of school and suddenly something happens, something terrible happens and where they initiated the use, we don't know necessarily. So that's another, but we do have the surveys that we take with the CTC, communities that care, and we do that in our different grade levels. It doesn't necessarily show us addiction, but it does show the level of use of, of various drugs and it can be something I, I think that could create some data from these school districts that CTC does have.
We have, of course, a lot to push on the pharmaceuticals, but I also say we have a lot of responsibility within our, ourselves. So we look at- So we look at the medication take-back day. And we've doubled down, tripled down, quadrupled down the opportunities for people to get those unused narcotics out of their medicine cabinet, because we've found that that's a lot of times where the kids are finding them. And that's a gateway to addiction. 14 days on oxycodone, for the most, for the average, sometimes it's sooner. So we have a youth bureau that's very focused on targeting. And I know they've been to Putnam Valley schools and all of the other school districts to talk to the kids about, you know, messing around, playing around, mm-mm, not anymore. It does not work like that. And I think that when I see, when I pulled in tonight and I saw the kids outside with their lacrosse, what do you call those, rackets or, you know, and you see the kids jumping into their parents' vehicle, you feel, you feel good about that, that, you know, there are, there are a lot of good things going on on school campuses, correct? The majority. But there is that dark corner that we have to keep a keen eye on.
What we're seeing is this vaping, the use of...
Oh.
Vaping is a gateway, we think, to different types of addiction. Students don't even know sometimes what's in these vials that they're using. And this has been a sudden change. Students are becoming addicted to nicotine. We're seeing a lot of disruption that we've sort of countered now because it was, there was really an intensive use in the beginning of the year, but we had to exclude students from school for a while. And we've seen a change, but it is there and it starts at the middle school. And it's, to me, the vaping has become the most insidious
Yes.
...kind of intrusion into students' lives.
It's in front of the Putnam County Legislature right now, some vaping legislation for merchandising and sale.
It really doesn't belong in any category right now.
It, vaping, I was talking to the new superintendent of the Mahopac Schools, Anthony DeCarlo, who was a colleague of mine on the legislature, and he brought that very topic up and was telling me in a very short period of time how many instances he's had already involving the vaping. And he brought a pulmonologist in to speak to the parents. I'm sure you have discussed the same opportunity. If not, I, the presentation, he said, was incredibly powerful about what is actually occurring in your lungs, what's happening. This vaping, these boxes, I guess, that the kids are using are $200, $300 sometimes. It's, the whole vaping is, I guess, I don't know, I feel very old when I, I felt very old. I'd never, ever heard of that vaping. I've seen people smoking, not a cigarette, but I thought that was a method of
Quitting, quitting.
Of reducing nicotine, correct. So I think that Dr. Willis, your point is duly noted, there is a lot that we do need to educate ourselves on, with the vaping. And again, as I said earlier, we have so much in common in municipal government, county government and school districts. We're looking, we're all looking at the same struggles. And so that's why I thought it was important for me to come down and speak to you personally about this litigation on behalf of legislator Scuchimara and legislator Goldman as well. And so I thank you for your time. And I, your seven years of holding the line is impressive. I know it's so hard, we're doing more with less these days than your state aid, I've seen from the other school districts, the struggle that's happening right now. And again, if we can be any help in shared services, any efficiencies, any help that you can, that you think that we can help you with, I'm just a phone call away.
Ms. Doherty, where can we get information on the drug treatment court graduation? I would love to see that.
I will have my chief of staff, Tricia Simone, contact Dr. Willis's office. And what they, it's a fluid schedule when, you know, as the queue
As people are ready enough.
Are ready to go, four or five, sometimes there's six or seven, sometimes four or five, about that. And it's about a one-hour program. It typically is at 2:00 in the afternoon. They're held in the historic courthouse, right on, you know, right in the Hamlet of Carmel, right there. And, you know, bring some of your students or your guidance counselors.
Yeah, it's a very good idea.
I think it would be an eye-opener for everyone. You know, we'd love to be able to videotape them like you're doing, but of course, there's a privacy component. But I will say this last thing and then I'll close. There was resistance from the court administration above all of our pay grade on my wanting to fund the program ourselves, because it was originally run out of the Office for Court Administration. And I spoke to the judge at the time, it was Judge Shankman. And I said, "Listen, Alan, I'm sorry, but this program is way too important. The numbers are just there. I'm going down the hall to the legislature." It was about $100,000 we needed at the time, out of budget. And I, I'm sorry, but we're going to do this." He understood. About a year later, he came up to one of the graduations and he was very taken with the stories and, you know, how powerful those stories are. So, you know, he gave me the thumbs up and Judge Reitz, who runs the program, he's really taken it to a whole other level. But it's really a team and it's really, as I call it, it's the one army on the war on addiction. And I call on every one of those graduates to enlist, that they have to return the favor back. And they're more than, they're more than willing. They keep coming back to the graduations. It's, it's a very powerful story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you, everyone. It's 52 degrees out, just so you know, so I think we're on the, on the, I, we thought so a couple of times, so I'm not going to jinx it. But anyway, thank you again for taking the time. And for all you do, the volunteers, the trustees, for all your time, it's a big lift, I know that. Thank you.
Thank you for working partnership with us. Okey-dokey. Lost my agenda. Okay, thank you. We'll move to reports and we have no students here. Ms. Casey, are you here for the PTA? Okey-dokey.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christina Casey and I am the Middle School Teacher Liaison and the corresponding secretary for the Putnam Valley PTA. We have several events coming up, coming up in the next couple of weeks. Today, April 12th, is the last day to place your orders for the fourth grade Spirit t-shirt. Students voted on a design and they will appear on the front. All fourth grade names will be on the back. T-shirts are $15 and you can find the link in your email, website and on our Facebook page. Tomorrow night, Friday the 13th, we're having our third grade level event, the Human Board Game. We invite all third grade families to attend. Cost is $10 per family. Tickets can be purchased on our website. Snacks and drinks will be provided at the event. April 16th is the last day to place your orders for the elementary school yearbook. The website is yearbookordercenter.com and our order number is 1-8-0-0-4. Link and order numbers can also be found in your email, on our website and on our Facebook page. On Thursday, April 19th, we are hosting a special PTA general meeting in collaboration with our elementary and middle school administrators and some of our administrators here tonight in the middle school cafeteria at 7:00. This is an opportunity for families to meet with administrators and have an open discussion about topics concerning our schools and students. Please note that this forum is to discuss general topics of concern, not questions regarding individual students or incidents. Administrators will be more than happy to meet with you for those. April 23rd through 25th, we are hosting the Middle School Book Fair during the lunch periods. We're looking for volunteers and looking for someone to chair the Middle School Book Fair Committee next year. Flyers with the contact person will be sent out next week. And save the date for our spring fundraiser. We're having our first ever pocketbook fundraiser, pocketbook bingo fundraiser on Saturday, June 9th, from 6:30 to 9:30. This is an 18 and over event. The cost is $35 in advance and $40 at the door. It'll include 10 bingo games. We'll also have raffles, 50/50 raffle and a cash bar. Some of our designer purses so far include Michael Kors, Coach, Kate Spade, Dunian Bork and Vera Bradley. Stay tuned for more information.
And did you say that was the 10th?
The June 9th. From 6:30, 9:30. And it's, I believe, at the German American Club where it's going to be hosted. To purchase tickets or volunteer for any of the events mentioned tonight, please sign up through your PTA account at www.putnamvalleypta.org or email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org and like our Facebook page for more information. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I do like pocketbook bingo. I never win, but I do like it. Okay. And Dr. Luft, would you present us with your curriculum report?
Sure. Good evening. So the district has an exciting new initiative beginning in the very near future. I expect a notification to go out to teachers in the next couple of days. We're calling it the PV Innovative Classroom Academy. And there's three main parts to it. First is providing teachers the opportunity to rethink the physical space within their classroom and includes the use of flexible seating and maximizing all learning spaces within the classroom. The second is an examination of the pedagogical shifts to engage student learning. So some examples of this is providing students with choice within the learning process. And the last is to empower our teaching staff to cultivate a culture of professional learning. Teachers that are nominated and accepted into this academy will be asked to open up their classroom doors for some peer observations, as well as agree to lead some turnkey training for their colleagues. So we think it's going to be very exciting. It's going to be funded within the existing constraints of our budget, using our summer curriculum work, as well as existing equipment money to help furnish some of the classrooms. So stay tuned for more updates from that. We'll meet three times over the summer and then five full days throughout the school year. Altoris K-12 Security Consulting has been currently working with the district in the buildings, scheduling walkthroughs for their needs assessment. They participated in one of our administrative team meetings and brought us through some exercises and explaining the services they'll be offering. We have them tentatively scheduled to provide a training during our upcoming superintendent's conference day on June 25th. And they're currently working on the needs assessment for each of the buildings and will provide us with a report once complete. Self-Sustainability has scheduled a sustainable week. Each of the buildings will be participating in a variety of different activities and we'll be sure to share more information back about that. They're also offering a Sustainability Institute this summer, where teachers from our district, as well as neighboring districts, will be able to sign up and participate to learn more about how they can support sustainability and sustainable goals within their classroom. And the Self Committee recently completed a facilities tour and presentation regarding the upcoming EPC work and the existing geothermal systems within our building. A quick facilities planning update, we're continuing to review revisions of architectural design drawings and we're planning a final committee meeting, as well as building meetings and a Board of Ed presentation in May. At the elementary school, the implementation of the math challenge box continues to be a success. We're examining our current AIS structure to make sure that we are serving all students who need that additional support. I was invited into several second grade classrooms for their reptile presentations. A huge favorite of mine, because I really love a lot of reptiles. But I was very excited to see the variety of tools that students use to complete these, how eager they were to share what they've learned. I had students dragging me out into the hallway to show me how to use an iPad to scan a QR code, which played a video where they were able to voice over what they learned about the reptiles. So it was very impressive, the students were very eager to share all that they learned. And I would encourage anyone else who's in the building to stop by second grade classrooms, many of them are available right out in the hallway.
No actual reptiles are in presence.
Thank God, no.
Just checking.
Our elementary school, Director Missarillo, our technology teacher, is hosting a Google Expedition. So Google Expeditions is a virtual reality tool where Google will be providing the devices and the goggles and second grade students are signing up to participate in these virtual experiences under the leadership of Google and their teachers. So I've done it before, I've participated. It's very exciting, it's extremely real and there's lots of potential educational implications for those type of tools. At the middle school, we're exploring the creation of a new master's schedule, which includes the use of block scheduling for some of our content areas, as well as new encores. To the best of my knowledge, the master's schedule has not changed drastically in many years and this is a complete overhaul. I have to commend the amount of work that has gone into it by our middle school administration. I think Nicole sleeps with her schedule in her pillow. And we're nearing the point where we actually have something that may be usable and we'll certainly go through the channels and share it with the teachers and iron at all the wrinkles. But it's a very exciting initiative and something that we've been very busy on. Deputy McMahon, our SRO, provided an emergency response training at our middle school. The middle school has a new committee, it's called the Committee for Change. I'm going to put Dr. Willis on the spot in one second. So a group of students got together and asked if they can begin to start this committee. One of the things that the committee is looking at is the security of our building. So these are concerns coming directly from teachers. And I know they invited Dr. Willis to their last meeting. So do you want to give a quick highlight of what they've discussed?
Actually, it's, there are students on the committee. It's students and Mr. McCarty and our assistant principal as well, Nicole Mangieri. And the students are interested. They would like to see more security in the building around the perimeter of the building. They have very much, they feel the need for more support from some of the counseling support in different ways, so that it's more confidential. They want someone who they can speak to spontaneously and have more time with someone. So this is something the students talked about. I think in general, I would say that they really are affected or were affected by the Parkland situation, the shooting there. Students are very, very interested. They would like to have the kind of active shooter training that we had, the defense training that the, you know, that Deputy McMahon provided for the teachers. They feel that they want to get a handle on security in the building. This is an internal issue for kids right now. Also, as you know, we had a tragedy at the middle school and with, you know, not at the middle school, of a student who was at the middle school. And I think that has had more of an effect than we might imagine on students who have trouble sleeping. It had a very serious impact on their lives. So it's something that students are acutely aware of. And I did go to their first meeting and we will be talking about some of the things that they would like to see introduced. The doors, you know, they want more alarms on the doors. And the one area of the school that concerned them is the afternoon when the entrance to the facilities, to the gyms and so on, and we're working on that, on that piece as well.
Thank you. So at our last ELA department meeting, there was a focus on reading strategies in AIS. That's a common theme you'll see across all the buildings. Our middle school health teacher, Mr. Dan Turner, presented at the PTA meeting regarding vaping, social media and making good choices. The high school, I had the honor to attend our first robotics competition, which was held at Rockland Community College. I was, as a former physics geek, I certainly appreciate the robots part, but I was really taken back by the spirit of the competition. While here, our team is very new, this is our first competition ever. And more established teams are there with a lot more resources than we have. But the relationship our students formed with their competitors and their willingness and ability to come over and assist our students in getting our robot up and running was really impressive. I wasn't prepared for that aspect of the experience. I expected it to be super competitive and winner-take-all mentality. And it was really more of a, we'll do anything we can. more of a, we'll do anything we can to help you out, to get you in there, to, so they were borrowing tools, they were asking questions, students were walking around, there was interviews, asking what their team did well for the, the team portion of the competition, where, where multiple teams competed together. It was really impressive. Our students had a great time. They were extremely hard at work. I know they were there for several days, and very long days, where there's timetables of what they can get done, and they had to be finished that night in order to enter the competition the next day. And it was really a sense of caring over competition. So, I was very impressed. There was a delegation of responsibilities. Every, every student on our team had a different responsibility. Some of them were working on different parts of the robot, others were in charge of tools, others were, uh, answering questions for other teams that came over to ask about our robots when looking for a partner. So, I only wish them the best of luck, and I'm sure that we performed very well in our first competition, and I'm sure we'll continue to improve moving forward. Just a quick mention, on April twentieth, there's another nationally scheduled walkout. Our school, our high school students have decided to have a walk-up instead of walking out. They decided, and encouraged students to come to school. We're planning a walk-up to the library for breakfast and other special activities, so that's scheduled. And again, that was done in concert with our building administration and our student leaders. There, we've been working on our IB academic honesty policy. That's something that's a requirement as we continue through the authorization process. And just a little personal experience, this morning I had, I wouldn't say the honor, but I, I observed five classrooms in a row, so five different teachers and five different lessons. And it, I, when I got back to the office, I felt mentally exhausted. And when I tried to sit down and debrief and, and fill out the forms I needed to, it made me think about what life must be like for students. So, I just wanted to, to make a mention that certainly the block schedule is better for students, and, and for students not to have to learn for forty minutes, and then rush through that hallway and get another class, and try to remember another forty minutes worth of content, seems like an impossibility, and I'm not sure how we all did it, but having the block schedule has to make our student lives easier. I barely survived today. Thank you.
Stamina. We keep talking about stamina for our students, and it's true. Dr. Wills?
Yes, um, a few things. First of all, uh, I'd like to mention that I did receive, uh, an anonymous alert from a parent, um, or a community member, who was concerned about the vote, voting at the elementary school, and, um, having students there. Again, this is on people's minds. So, I want to assure the community that that area is blocked off during the vote, and there's no way that anyone can enter except through the, the door, the cafeteria door. And the students are not in that area, and the, um, other doors are blocked. We're also going to have an additional security person there. We do have, uh, our, um, SPO there, Mr. Turn, uh, Officer Turner, but we will also be having a security person, additional security person this year, um, you know, just to ensure that people feel safe, and, uh, that we are, um, providing that additional layer of security. In that same vein, um, at the high school, they have invited therapy dogs. Since we had the, um, you know, the, the tragedy where we had the, uh, therapy dogs there for the grief session, uh, we've had therapy dogs at the high school. And what we noticed, and what our principal noticed, was just how many students come to the dog and feel, you know, like, it, it relieves stress, it gives them a good feeling, and these are students of every ability level and interest. And, uh, it's something apparently that other school districts are doing at their schools, having a, a therapy dog. And it's certainly something, um, I would, uh, would be recommending that we look into. We are looking for ways for kids to feel better about, um, their lives. We have so many stressors in our lives right now. You hear about the addiction. We know that there are homes where there are, um, occurrences that are very difficult for students. They are struggling, uh, with that. And so, when a student comes here, uh, we see them, we have to see them as whole people, not just academics, not just students, but all of their feelings and emotions, and what they're carrying with them. So, this is, um, something that we certainly are looking into. Um, I wanted to mention, um, apparently there's been some concern about, uh, an altercation at a lacrosse game, uh, recently with another school, and it turns, uh, out that the officials deemed the other party responsible, not our, uh, school district. Um, and that I did follow up with the superintendent from the other district, and, uh, Mr. Burrow followed up with the athletic director, um, because, you know, there was a concern about that incident. Unfortunately, um, what we see more and more is a very combative type of way of dealing with one another, um, in general. Uh, and I think it's something we need to be aware of. This can happen. We, you've heard of that happening in the stands, not here, but it's happened. Uh, I think there were, maybe, there may be, may have been an incident here as well. Uh, this is, uh, the adults we're talking about. And we also have situations on the field, and I think we have to be very cognizant of the fact, um, that we're trying to have an environment where kids are having fun, where they're enjoying themselves. Competition is fun, and yes, you can get heated in competition, but that we have to teach, uh, students about how restraint is significant and important, and that sometimes people can get hurt more than they think they can, that it could happen. So, we are concerned about that. Um, I wanted to also mention that, um, I was able to, with our, our high school principal, able to attend a special event honoring our, um, Westchester, uh, science affair winner. Um, we had nine students who are recognized in one, but we had, um, Sarah Broas, who is normally here on the board, but she was the top scorer of all, and she and fifteen, or fourteen other young people from that, uh, fair, uh, who received these very high scores, are on their way to the International Science Fair, and it's a science and engineering fair. It's a pretty remarkable, um, honor. And the Putnam Examiner had a phenomenal article about that. Uh, we were in the front page with that, and commented on the fact that this is a very young program that has made its mark already. Um, and, uh, again, our teachers are, Jerry Zupan has put his heart and soul into the program with these students, and it shows. Um, and the students are succeeding beyond our wildest dreams. This program takes students to, um, colleges of their choice, uh, provides them often with merit scholarships, with notice, and allows them to do something they really love. So, um, we're excited about the program and about making our mark. Uh, this was noted at the dinner, which was the, uh, that honored them. We also had, uh, four students honored today for their admission to, to, um, Division One and Two schools. Uh, they were here. Uh, it's the NCAA program that we had to honor them. And again, these students are on their way, in their lives, in a very, very positive way. We have many opportunities. Next week, we have our play, um, uh, which again is a place where students form a community of like-minded, with like-minded interests, and also well on their way to fulfill their ambitions. Our concern is that we would like to see every student find their niche, find their way, uh, find their passion, and, uh, their allies in the school. That's what we're looking for, and that's what I think is the way that we help students to succeed. Wanted to note that, um, we will be having a superintendent's conference day on June twenty-fifth, which is the Monday after raining day, a very unusual, uh, event occurring because we, uh, had so many snow days that we needed that additional day and, uh, conference day. And we did, uh, have an agreement with the Teachers Association to have that day, um, in order to make our hundred-and-eighty days, and allow us to then receive our full portion of aid, um, that we use to, again, to have all these programs that we offer. Um, the Putnam Examiner also had a wonderful article on our LAX program, um, in the same Putnam, uh, Examiner. And also, um, mentioned one of our, quoted one of our psychologists, Jason Kane, who was at a leadership, safety leadership conference, same, same topic of, of safety, which was, uh, focused on threat assessment, which is another, uh, area that our safety groups are going to have to be looking at. I think, were you there at that meeting? I don't know, Brian. Mr. Burrow was there. Yes, we had several of our staff members there. And, uh, every school district will have to have a threat assessment team, committee, um, as another aspect of safety in New York State, um, which means that you are talking about all your clinical people, um, to look at student profiles and see, um, what we have to be very aware of in terms of, uh, student behaviors that could lead to, uh, to serious issues in the future. So, uh, another, we're going to have a, uh, presentation by our homework club advisors at one of our meetings coming up, and if you ever are in the, uh, the middle school in the afternoon, you go up to the hall room, it's packed with students who come back for extra help, and the help is provided by, um, our Honor of Society students, as well as teachers, uh, a group of teachers who are there at that program. It's been funded by the Hope for Youth Foundation grant, and, uh, it's really become something that, uh, is looked at as a, another way, another avenue for students to improve their academics. Is it? Oh, I shouldn't forget, one very important topic. We have our, um, we started our assessments, and, um, we had a significant reduction in the number of refusals in our school district, and more students are feeling confident, and parents confident, and, uh, students are, uh, sitting for the tests. This year, uh, we had a sixteen percent, uh, refusal, and last year that was twenty-eight percent. We started in two thousand fifteen with thirty-four percent. So, um, you know, we're talking about a sizable number now of students who are participating.
And it helps give us a real accurate assessment.
We can understand how our students are doing, and what, what more we need to do to ensure that they succeed, so, um, and I have to compliment our administrators and the work they've done, uh, to connect with parents and to help them see that this is of value.
Okay. Let's open it up to public contribution on any of the agenda items, and then I would like to move into new business. Mr. Ferraro, number one.
Resolved by the Putnam Valley Board of Education to adopt a tentative budget for two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year, the amount of fifty-one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District approve the property tax report card for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year as per document number one forty-four slash eighteen, and authorize the district treasurer to submit it to the State Education Department.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This is basically summarizing the material that Jill was presenting about what part taxes and everything else, and how they're based.
The new, the new element of the report card this year is the, um, the schedule of reserve funds. So, now we have to, um, report them individually, so, um, not as an aggregate total. So, that's the only difference in the change in it this year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve Michael Giordano to eleven-week, long-term substitute teaching position as a technology teacher at the middle school, effective April third, twenty eighteen, to June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the substitute salary rate of a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per day.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved on the recommendation, the superintendent of schools to appoint Michelle Gable. Gable, to a six-week, six-week, long-term substitute position as a special education teacher at the middle school, beginning on, on or about April ninth, two thousand eighteen, through May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education, with April third and fourth, two thousand eighteen, as training dates at the substitute salary rate of two hundred and sixty dollars per day. Ms. Gibley holds the following certifications: Students with Disabilities, B, uh, B-two initial, Early Education, sorry, Early Childhood Education, B-two supplemental; Students with Disabilities, one through six, initial, and Childhood Education, one through six, initial.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Kimberly Tyra, a school monitor at the elementary school from the district, effective April fifth, two thousand eighteen, as per document number one forty-five slash eighteen, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves a one-year leave of absence for Dorothy Franz during the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year, from her tenured, elementary tenured area teaching position, effective September first, two thousand eighteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the CSEA to modify Article Seven Retirement of the collectively negotiated agreement between the district and the CSEA that expires June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one forty-nine eighteen, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number, related to that, number eight.
Number eight, I'll apologize beforehand for any names I misread. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept resignations for the purpose of retirement, under the Retirement Incentive Memorandum of Agreement, document number one forty-nine slash eighteen, ratified at this meeting between the district and the CSEA, of the following staff members, as per the noted documents which are attached to the official minutes of this meeting. Elizabeth Boscarino, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one fifty slash eighteen. Sandra Burstell, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one fifty-one slash eighteen. Marie Gabary, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one fifty-two slash eighteen. Raymond Gardner, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one fifty-three slash eighteen. Caroline Heller, effective August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one fifty-four slash eighteen. Christine Medina, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one fifty-five slash eighteen. Fanny Mondelli, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one fifty-six slash eighteen. Conchetta Najja, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one fifty-seven slash eighteen. Rosemarie Paezy, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one fifty-eight slash eighteen. Cynthia Plecia, Plecia, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one fifty-nine slash eighteen. Lynn Sharp, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one sixty slash eighteen. Ray Stillson, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as per document number one sixty-one slash eighteen.
Second.
Questions or comments?
You got them right.
Very nicely done. These are, um, names that have been, these are institutions in our, in our, um, a couple of tears came to my eyes at the thought of them not being in the school. I was happy that it's nineteen, I have a little processing time. Um, and we will certainly talk much more about their retirements and their accomplishments as that date approaches, but, um, these are some big shoes to fill, so I wish them all...
And a very heavy hit at the middle school, so that'll be a really big culture change.
The maternal factor of the middle school is about to disappear entirely, so, you know, but obviously the people that we are hiring are also wonderful, but these are, this is gonna be some losses, so we wish them the very, very best, but we're not gonna say goodbye.
Next year.
Because we got a year. Because we got a year and two or three months still, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Konstant Nugent to a 26-week probationary appointment effective June 4th, 2018 through December 4th, 2018, extendable to June 4th, 2019 as an RN for a Putnam Valley High School student attending Carmel High School on Step 7 prorated of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 10.
Resolution to approve supplemental memorandum of agreement between the district and the PBFT be, be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools at the Board of Education hereby approves the terms of a supplemental memorandum of agreement dated April 10th, 2018 between the district and the Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers as presented to the Board at this meeting, a copy of which agreement shall be incorporated by reference to the minutes of this meeting as per document number 16318.
Second.
Questions or comments?
What this is about is what Superintendent Wills has been talking about, it's the conference day. And in the original contract it states how many conference days there were, and this is an agreement to give us that extra day.
And it states what day the school ended, and now it's another year, so another day. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
This is me, right?
I think it's you.
Resolve to approve the consent agenda, items 2 through 11 as presented to the Board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're amending the list of coaches for the spring season. We're approving a stipend for the winter coaches who had postseason activities like the boys and girls basketball, the wrestling and the cheerleaders. We're approving health and welfare contracts with the Lakeland School District for 20 students, New Rochelle for tw, for two students, Somers for 16 students. These are students who are attending schools in their area, say like Kennedy School and Lakeland Supply Services, Special Need Services. A men motion for unpaid day for nine staff members correcting days. Some of the original days requested turned out to be snow days, thus they are paid. Approving CSE, CPSE placements, we're approving additions in substitute tutor lists, we're approving an agreement with the Eastchester School District for a special ed student from Putnam Valley who is attending their school, school due to the services they can offer this student. We're approving a service agreement with Management Advisory Group Special Services to provide consulting services for stacked forms for our students with special needs. We're approving a four-day unpaid leave for an employee and we're approving budget transfers to cover the energy costs and to cover the height, the elementary school fence, the high school traffic study, the elementary school rental for air conditioning for the moving up ceremony.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to open it up to public contribution?
I'll just make it really quick, just for the community, our next two meetings for this Board of Education will be on Tuesday.
Tuesdays.
Not Thursdays. We have a meeting on April 24th, and that is the day when all the districts within our local Putnam, Northern Westchester, both of these will be meeting to be voting on their candidates and their budget. We have a meeting on May 1st, which Jill Figarella mentioned, that will be the final budget presentation, so that's on Tuesday. The budget vote is Tuesday, May 15th, and the polls are at the elementary school and they open at 6 o'clock.
Jill, are you going to do something special for that final presentation? Like music or something?
Little dance. Maureen, which is the tenure, is that the 24th? Because it's always the same as the Bozies budget, so retirees and tenures operation. I just wanted to share something ironically called share, Share 911. Jeremy and Fran, Dr. Arthur, Dr. Wills, our superintendent's conference day, which was during the break, it's a software that the district is using to link staff cell phones in the event of an emergency. And they did a presentation for us. You can, who you have with you, who's missing, somebody can put out a list, these five students are missing, and somebody could say, I know they went off ground, I know they're absent, while you're in lockdown without any talk or noise. Plus, this door's open, that door's open. It's, there's a couple of them apparently. This company seems very nice and was very user-friendly, so maybe something to look into.
Yeah, that's a tool I've used in, in another district, so I'm familiar with it. It's something that we can certainly look at. It was, at least in that district, used more as a conceptual framework than it was an actual practical one, but it's all about how well it's implemented. It, it offers a lot of features for sure. It's something we could look at.
You like to think you never need it, but if you've ever been in a lockdown, that you're not sure why you're in the lockdown, that minute is 15 years. So just being able, and, and we don't want anybody to make silly mistakes or potentially tragic mistakes because they don't know what's going on. So just, there's so many out there, so just wanted to bring that up. Mr. Thier, something?
On a later note, Dirty Rotten Scoundrels is coming up, and to any senior citizens in the audience, on Thursday, the 19th, I believe it's at 3:00 PM, there's a special show for the senior citizens, and it's free of charge. And, and after the show, if you do register, you have to register, there's a light meal after that. It's really, it's always a great day. It's always a great time, a great show, certainly, and then a, a nice meal and fellowship afterwards. So hope to see a lot of our seniors there.
Yes.
I'll be there.
And we will have a meeting before the middle school play, so we'll talk about that. That's right, that's the following week. This is our play season. It's very exciting. Okay, at this time, okay, okay, at this time, I would like to convene an executive session for eight matters of the employment history of eight particular persons and one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.